I'm going to call this meeting to order. Debbie, if you could go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus. Darlene Kleppel. Mayor Smith. Christopher Walton.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Mary Als Wu.
Here.
Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss and Tom Bruno are not here today. Katina Wiltshire.
I'm here. Good morning.
And Kelly Blandon. Thank you.
Okay, so I need an approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Wiltshire.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call, sorry.
It's okay. Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu. Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Kelly Blandon. And Mayor Finan.
Yes, it is approved. Do we have any audience participation?
I do not see any.
I don't either. We have the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes for October 28.
So moved.
Motion, is that Christopher?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Tell when I can't see ya.
Second, Mary Alice.
Mary Alice.
Second by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Kelly Blandon. Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
And Mayor Finan.
Yes, it is approved.
Thank you.
We have the consolidated financial reports. I need a motion to approve for October 28, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Wiltshire.
We have a motion by Walton, second by Wiltshire. Betty, did you want to say anything?
Sure. Good morning. You might note that the fund balance remains healthy at just over 13.6 million. This is consistent with the size of the RPC and the volume of transactions. You might also note that our receivables are significant in the month of October. That is primarily due to large drawdowns for LIHEP in excess of two and a half million and CSBG and CSBG Cares funds over $437,000. Those drawdowns have been executed. The funds have not yet been received and/or posted, but they will be posted in November after receipt. So that's an unusual circumstance just due to the heavy volume.
Anybody have any questions? Please call the roll.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Kelly Blandon. And Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved. We have our list of bills from Funds 75, 104, 110, 474, and 475. We need a motion to accept and place it on file.
I'll make that motion, Wiltshire.
Sex.
Do we have a second?
Who was the second, please?
Walton.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Thank you.
They are approved and placed on file. We have a budget amendment 2075-926 for ISC supportive housing. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion by Walton, a second by Wiltshire. Betty, did you want to talk about this at all?
Sure. So this is in addition to the FY22 budget to accommodate the receipt of new funding that was passed through from the Illinois Department of Human Services to the Illinois Council on Developmental Disabilities. This council approved funding in the amount of $30,000 to assist individuals to move into supporting supportive housing residences. We, the RPC is the designated ISC agency or independent service coordinate agency serving Region H, which covers 15 counties in Illinois. Each qualified program participant can receive up to $2,000 in transition assistance funding. So I request your approval of the receipt and amendment to our FY22 budget.
Is there any discussion or questions for Betty? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Could I have a motion and a second? Oh, no, we already have. That's true. Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is approved. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start and Early Head Start Expansion. And we have the continuation of funding applications for the grant year for March 21st, 2023 through February 29th, 2024. We have a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion, Katina Wiltshire.
And is there a second?
Second, Marlin.
And then Brandy, I see you're on. Do you want to speak to that?
Good morning. I did attach the budget and enrollment information for the Head Start, Early Head Start, and Early Head Start Expansion Continuation Grant Applications for the fiscal year of March 1, 2023 through February 29, 2024. This is a, as you have noticed, there is a reduction request for a number of children, 143 Head Start children. If approved by the Office of Head Start, our funding would remain the same. So this there would be changes to staffing, some increase to wages and benefits, as well as addressing any rising costs of utilities, food, contractual services throughout the programming. The program would then serve 523 children and pregnant women. In addition, our program is working towards collaborative agreements with Baby Fold, Dream, and Well Experienced to offer center-based and home-based services to Head Start and Early Head Start children and increase family engagement. I believe these changes will strengthen our program's services, fill staff vacancies, improve quality of services to children and families, and alleviate stress for staff and families, and sustain a healthy budget. I'm asking for your support to approve the proposed funded enrollments budgets and the required documents for the continuation grant applications, which were also provided in your packet, the community assessment, self-assessment, continually continuous quality improvement plan, as well as our annual report. I'm open to questions.
Are there any questions for Brandy? All right, please. Anyone want to speak to this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Abstain.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mayor Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Finan.
Yes, it is approved. The next item on our agenda is approval of the FY23 final budget compensation adjustments. And we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Walton, second by Marlin. Delitzo or Betty, did you want to speak to this?
I can kick it off and then I'll hand it over to Betty. First, I'd like to just extend our appreciation to the commissioners, to the patients. I know we had to reschedule the meeting to meet today due to the fact that it took us some time to come up with this compensation plan. You know, as you know, we've, we've been, you know, challenged and being a grant-funded organization, trying to come up with a competitive way to compensate our staff has been quite challenging, but we hope that what we're presenting to you today will help us to retain and attract staff here to the RPC. So with that said, I will hand it over to Betty so she can walk you through how we arrived to what we're presenting to you today as our compensation plan for FY2023.
Yes, so thank you, Delitzo. This fall, we engaged again the AIM Employers Association to conduct a comprehensive position-specific review of all positions within the RPC. We hadn't done that for a number of years. Given the inflationary market and the tight labor market that we're in, we felt that this was appropriate. The final analysis indicated that our pay ranges are on average 9.38% below the current market. This compensation analysis, of course, is critical in our ability to retain a skilled and motivated workforce. As you have seen from our previous agendas, we have, we have realized significant turnover. We're having difficulty recruiting and retaining qualified applicants. It's a very tight labor market that doesn't really show signs of easing. That said, these division and position-specific pay ranges are not only responsive to the current market and those position accountabilities and the job descriptions, but it also responds to our variations in grant funding. As you all know, the RPC is different than other public sector organizations in that we are solely grant-funded with federal and state funding. So our resources are limited based on the amount of revenue that we receive. Our planned strategy is in FY23 to do less than that market analysis recommends. This strategy, however, gives us the ability to be resilient and allows us to adapt to the market in 2023, consistent with the level of our resources and in an ever-changing talent market. So in considering our annual performance review process, our continued focus on achievement and productivity, we are recommending targeted merit and market increases. Generally, we do not recommend market increases, but this year and this environment is much different than in previous years. Merit awards can be either merit-to-base, which are permanent increases, or merit one-time. One-time merit awards allow us to recognize staff that achieve a significant accomplishment. Perhaps they are at the maximum of their range. They've exhibited overall stellar performance, but whose program or grant budget may be restricted. One-time merit are awarded as a lump sum in December prior to the close of the fiscal year, and they have all been included in the FY22 budget. 115 staff are recommended to receive a one-time merit ranging from $500 to $10,000. The total amount of merit one-time, which has already been included in the FY22 budget, is $286,125. The Employers Association recommended, since they moved all of the ranges, which you can see are position-specific, at least to the minimum of the new salary range. In moving high-performing people to comparability in those ranges, we had to take a look at what was affordable based on divisional resources. So the proposed compensation plan, we're trying to promote internal and external equity, recognition of extraordinary achievement, and we also take into account talent acquisition and retention. So the FY23 compensation plan, we request movement to the minimum or market. The average of that is 2.84%. Merit-to-base, average of 1.9% for a total 2023 pay adjustment excluding the one-time merits of 4.74% or $369,854. I would also like to note, similar to last year, that in response to the Employers Association recommendation, we also would like to, and in response to the continuing change in the external market, we would like to reserve an additional 2.5% in our FY23 budget to accommodate any anticipated changes in grant funding and the continuing inflationary impact of the labor shortage. So we have included that 2.5% reserve in the FY23 budget in the event that we need it. Thank you for your consideration.
Betty, I see that Chief Executive Officer is listed on here for Delitzo. Do we need to approve that separately, or is that just part of the whole package?
That is just part of the salary ranges identified by AIM, but as, as the commissioners know, his contract and pay rates are separate from this overall. This is just simply the range of the market for that position.
So I think we had not approved a bonus for him yet because we were waiting to see what was going on with everyone else. Am I remembering that correctly? And we, Becky's getting on good. Do we need to approve that separately? Can you help me?
Yes, please, Mayor. Let's go ahead and approve the CEO's one-time merit.
Okay, so are we going into closed session to do that, or we're just approving it?
A closed session would more than likely be the best option.
Do we have a closed session listed on our agenda for that?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Okay. At the end?
Yes.
My jumping ahead? I'm jumping ahead. Okay. Sorry. Okay, so we'll get to that. So we can approve everybody else and then approve his at the end.
Yes, that would be terrific. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions other than mine for Betty? All right. Oh, Darlene, please go ahead.
I just, I have one question. I just, it seems like a pretty huge range difference between $500 and $10,000. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, some of our divisions and programs have an abundance of grant resources, and some of them have very limited resources, and some staff have exhibited incredible overall achievement and competencies, given the lack of staffing that we've experienced in the past year. So I believe these one-time merit increases, and these have all been prepared and submitted by each division director based on the performance reviews in their respective divisions. So they have the opportunity to recommend, based on performance reviews, and perhaps because they had budget restrictions and cannot do merit-to-base or permanent increases, they would like to recognize those staff with extraordinary achievement in the FY22 budget where there are resources available. So it varied based on accomplishments and productivity.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I just don't, I want to emphasize that I know we've talked about the averages, but as you can see from the memo submitted, when you look at the merit-to-base, the ranges range from 0.45% to 7%. So even though the average is 1.9%, those are the actual ranges that people were awarded in terms of merit-to-base.
Got it. Thank you. Anyone else? Right, please call the roll.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus. Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is approved. So we have the RPC calendar dates. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Wu.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I'll call the roll.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Finan.
Yes, now it's approved.
Thank you.
We have the Head Start and Early Head Start Management Report and Financials. Brandy, do you, well, let's do a motion, please. You need a motion to approve, and we've got September.
So moved, Mary Alice.
There's a second.
Darling.
We have a motion and a second. And then Brandy, did you want to highlight anything?
Yes, certainly, Mayor. In the September report, the management team completed the 2021, 2022 self-assessment, community assessment, and annual reports, as well as the Continuous Quality Improvement Plan, which were provided to you as part of the continuation grant applications. A few of our strengths included the participation and coordination of several events last year, which supported our families as well as our programs, such as the Head Start Awareness Walk, the WILL Book Mentor Project, and the parent cafes that were facilitated by parents and provided an opportunity for them to gather and share thoughts, ideas, and support on various topics. The creation of onsite food and non-food pantries for families who could not get to the community food pantries after work were also provided and shown as a strength. The coordination of support services to families in need of housing, medical, mental health, and nutritional support were also identified. And then our program information report was completed at the end of August. At the end of the enrollment year for 2021, 2022, the report showed that our program served 604 children and pregnant women. Out of the enrollment, we served 37 children in foster care and for each, sorry, 45 children who were homeless. The reports also showed that 99.3% of the children had health insurance, almost 100% had accessible healthcare, and 100% had access to dental services. So this, again, was a huge strength for our program, but most importantly, our children and families were receiving services within our community. Our focus groups also identified challenges and areas of need, such as family engagement, which was also impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and also other illnesses that, you know, that prevented families from entering our facilities and participating in events. We also had a challenge with male and father involvement. This is something that we are continuing to support and nurture. We hope that working with Baby Fold and, as well as Dream and Well Experienced, we'll see an increase in that as well. We also identified, of course, challenges and staffing shortages, as you are well aware. And at this time, we have 45 vacancies. So again, that is supporting what we're, we're seeing across the program, as well as within our community. And then also challenging behaviors in the classroom. We did see an increase over the last two years, as well as an increase in children with diagnosed disabilities. Our team did create the Continuous Quality Improvement Plan to address these challenges and also the areas of need, and we'll be monitoring the progress quarterly. That concludes my report for September. Please let me know if you have questions.
Anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marnon, Finan, thank you.
Yes. It is approved. We have program updates. We start with Betty.
Sure. So staff are working very hard to close out the current fiscal year in the new county's Munis accounting system. It has not been totally straightforward this year. We've had to have a hybrid system midpoint to secure the data from this platform that we need for grant reimbursements, grant tracking, and financial reporting, but we've made significant progress in concert with the county on the Munis system. Staff are also working with Kronos, the technical support team, to advance the development of our new UKG payroll and HR systems. That is a work in progress and will take months. The second thing is, we've been focused, as I mentioned earlier, on performance evaluations, job analyses, and individual staffing structures in each division for FY23, based on our resources and our organizational needs. And this is in light of the number of vacancies that we've encountered in the past 12 months. We've also begun contract negotiations with AFSMI, and we will begin an external program audit of the Police Training Grant in January. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Becky next.
Thank you so much, Mayor. The Human Resources Report included in your packet today represents personnel transactions from October 18, 2022 to November 8, 2022. The human, as Betty has already discussed this morning, the Human Resources Department has been working with the fiscal team and leadership, developing compensation strategies to attract, motivate, and retain qualified staff. The management team continues to work diligently to fill 45 open positions with the community services, Head Start, and Data Technology Divisions as soon as possible. We've also been working with the county on implementing our new HRIS and payroll system, UKG. And I would be happy to answer any questions today.
Any questions for Becky? Seeing none, Lisa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
With, in it, so the regular programming for community services continues. We have finished out a number of our pandemic recovery and relief funds, that specifically being the ARPA funds awarded from the county, and then our CSBG cares. The remaining pandemic recovery and relief funds that we have are emergency solutions grants, and then we still have some remaining Department of Treasury funding. With those funds, we are expanding emergency shelter for families with children. Over the winter, we've seen higher numbers of families with children that have not been, the capacity has not been able to meet their needs. So there's been some expansion of emergency sheltering in hotels. We continue currently our eviction prevention in the courts, providing rent assistance to avoid eviction and housing disruption. And then we have launched what we anticipate will be our final round emergency rent assistance from the Department of Treasury that is underway currently, and we'll close those applications on November 30, and then be working through the payment of that assistance. So majority of the additional services that we're providing in community services currently are regarding homelessness and housing stabilization. And happy to answer any specific questions that you have about any community services programming currently.
Thanks, Lisa. Is there any question? Seeing none, Miranda Rita.
Good morning, everyone. Staff continue to work on many several planning and transportation projects. However, I would like to mention one important project that we will start in January, and that is the Long Range Transportation Plan 2050. We will start that project in January. At this time, staff is working on defining the scope and timeline for that project. We will finish that project in December 2024 with the approval of the plan by the KiWAT's Policy Committee. But as part of the process of developing the LRTB 2050, staff will be requesting participating, participation from many uh, staff will be requesting participating, participation from many stakeholders, including RPC, uh, agency members. And we will be reaching out to you probably by January, February of twenty-twenty-four. Also, I would like to mention that RPC received notification that we were awarded two IDOT State Planning and Research Grants. Uh, we submitted three grants last spring, and we received two out of the three grants that we submitted. One was for conducting the Lincoln Avenue corridor study between Green Street and Florida Avenue. We'll receive, uh, the grant for three hundred thousand dollars for that project. And the other grant is for, uh, for improving the Keywads modeling suite that we use for developing the long-range transportation plan, which include the travel demand model, the line use model, the greenhouse gas model, and other models. And that grant is for four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, we'll, we haven't received the contracts yet. Hopefully, we'll be receiving those contracts at the beginning of next year. But those are two new projects that hopefully, uh, we'll start working on next year. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, I think, uh, Justin is next.
Good morning, everyone. Um, uh, we recently put out an annual report on East Central Illinois Worknet. As you know, RPC with, uh, chief elected officials in the five-county area and the Workforce Development Board is responsible for leading the local workforce system. Um, so that report is about what's happening in the local workforce system. Uh, parts of that report will be in RPC Annual Report. Uh, some highlights include providing career services and job training, um, to area residents, especially those with barriers to employment. Uh, with that, um, in mind, we just are wrapping up our application window for the January semester uh, for job training. That went well, and we're at capacity. Um, you see some movement in this, at the end of this year, in twenty-twenty-three, into twenty-twenty-three, about one-stop uh, site, uh, service integration. So the Illinois Department of Employment Security and Vocational Rehab are becoming more intentional about, um, collaborating, uh, to provide services insights, um, at sites. Uh, there had been a, a change, uh, to their service delivery methods, which included uh, appointment-only model or, um, not seeing the public at all, and that's starting to change uh, to a discussion about how to provide services and local one-stops, and that is because of the Governor's Commission that we've been a part of, uh, that work group. And so you're starting to see some movement at the local level. Um, serving justice-involved, uh, people has become, uh, part of our, um, kind of strategy. And we're having other local workforce areas, and DCE will reach out to talk about what we've learned over this past year of working with the Department of Corrections, and that was highlighted in the annual report. Uh, next year, we're looking at just providing a more robust inventory of our career pathways using data, so that will be a good project for twenty-twenty-three. And then lastly, we're about to wrap up, um, the initial, uh, MOU phase of our partnership with Parkland. We talked about this last month a little bit, but we have an apprenticeship, uh, specialist who, there'll be the RPC staff at Parkland will provide an office space on campus, and together RPC and Parkland will collaborate on expanding apprenticeships in our area. Um, that person has been, uh, offered a job and is being on-boarded, and, uh, Parkland is, uh, going through their process of developing a, a rent-free lease agreement. And as we develop a MOU, we've looked to have someone placed there by the first of the year, so we can continue to collaborate on expanding apprenticeships. So looking forward to that project in twenty-twenty-three.
Are there any questions? All right, Tyler.
Thanks, Deb. Um, so the Dating Technology Division has been working last several months on several, um, RPC-wide projects as well as, uh, division-specific projects. Um, we actually, uh, during this year, we lost two staff members, but we were able to replace them. There's still two more positions that are mid-level positions that have been vacant for over a year that we're continuously interviewing for and trying to fill. Um, we have expanded development of a web-based demographic analysis application under contract with the Ameren Illinois Company, and we have a presentation on that in mid-December. We are, uh, performing software development and analysis for grants related to transportation and planning. Um, we are currently redesigning the RPC website to make information easier to locate, increase client engagement, and simplify backend workflows. In addition to that, we're also building static websites specifically for the ARPA fund, for the allocation and reporting for the PCD department. We are, um, developing an in, in, internal client resource management application to increase coordination among RPC's programs. That's the Sierra Project. Uh, we're also administering an on-premise low-cost hosting solution for more than a dozen different RPC applications, and we're doing upgrades to that, which include consolidating those machines and moving them to a cloud platform. Um, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? All right, we're on to Delitzo.
Mayor, I don't have much, just, um, uh, a couple of things. Uh, you know that we presented to the, uh, Champagne City Council during a study session, uh, last month, uh, and we had two of our divisions present, uh, the Planning and Community Development Division, as well as Community Services. Um, with that said, uh, we are in the process of, um, uh, putting together our annual report for the RPC, which will feature the work of all of our divisions, and, uh, that should hopefully be available to the public, uh, the beginning of, uh, next year. I don't know if Lisa Benson mentioned this, but, uh, we do have our LaHeep, um, mobile outreach vehicle uh, that has, uh, it's now available, and we will be having a, um, a press conference, uh, to essentially introduce this to the community. Uh, Maury, uh, forget what the date is.
Uh, we're looking at December fourteenth from one-thirty to two-thirty PM.
December fourteenth, uh, it'll be here at the, uh, at Brookins, and so we're inviting a DCEO who are partners that actually funded us purchasing this vehicle, uh, as well as all of you and other, uh, public officials to attend that press event in December. Uh, again, with this, um, uh, asset, we're hoping that we'll be able to reach, uh, other neighborhoods, uh, within Champagne County that, uh, maybe it's a challenge for them to come to Brookings or to innovate champagne locations for, uh, LaHeep applications. And so we're very excited, uh, to have this as, um, an additional, um, um, I think, an additional tool for us to use as we do outreach throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Delitzo? Okay, do we have any old business? Okay, as we transition into the new business and we go into closed session, I'm gonna have Patrick Brown take over as chair, because I do have a nine-thirty meeting, and that way, if I need to get off, um, while we're in the middle, we have him running the meeting. So Patrick, if you want to take over, um, and I can make the motion if you'd like to. Um, first motion is to go into closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules from, uh, one or more classes of employees. We will also be in closed session to discuss litigation, um, when there is an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body that has been filed or is pending before the Quarter Administrative Tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. And the final reason will be closed session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, uh, we need a roll call, and, okay, we need, um, anyone that should not be in the closed sessions to leave the meeting?